I'd like to call the Monday, July the 23rd, 2018 Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting to order. And if I could ask you to please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and I welcome everyone here and also those that are watching. Tonight we have the consent agenda. Item two will be the public hearing for Adams Dairy Parkway, public hearing for rezoning of Dean's Performance Automotive. Fourth will be the public hearing planned development concept for Blue Springs South High School, followed by any other business and adjournment. And commissioners, please remember to stay afterwards for our public officials liability training. With that, on the consent agenda, I do see that there needs to be a correction made, and we'll need an amendment to that effect. The call to order was the -- she's so used to me being here. It says Chairman Banks, and then consent agenda approval was Chairman Banks. So we need to amend those minutes. Do I hear a motion to amend?
So moved.
Okay, and second?
Second.
Okay, the minutes to the Planning Commission meeting for July the 9th will now read, call to order was by Chairman Phillips. It's Vice Chair. It'll be Vice Chair Phillips.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I was present, but my name was not listed as present.
Okay, thank you. Let's see here.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll also amend the attendance and add Joe Haney. In attendance, thank you very much. And consent agenda approval will be also Vice Chair Phillips.
Can you make a motion to make that?
Yes.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Would you like to amend the attendance?
I would like to amend the amended minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so we've amended the amended minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
And Madam Chair.
Yes.
I would also move for approval of the amended minutes.
Yes. All right, do I hear a second to approve the amended amended minutes?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes were amended amended minutes were approved. Thank you very much. Okay, now we will go to the public hearing. What I'll do is I'll call the public hearing to order. I'll open the public hearing, call for exhibits. The staff will make their presentation, followed by the applicant will make theirs. I'll call for witnesses in favor, witnesses opposed. We'll have general questions and discussion. I'll close the public hearing, and then we will have a roll call vote. So with that, I'll call the public hearing on the vacation of Adams Dairy Parkway and call for exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 7, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. Nine, AT&amp;T email dated June 18, 2018. Ten, Comcast email dated June 27, 2018. Eleven, KCPN mail dated June 26, 2018. Twelve, MoDOT email dated June 27, 2018. And thirteen, Spire email dated June 26, 2018.
Okay, Mr. Wright?
All right, thank you Chairman Banks and commissioners. Before this evening is a request for street right-of-way vacation for the remaining portion of northeast Adams Dairy Road between northeast Coronado Drive and northeast Artemiz Road. This vacation includes approximately .53 acres of right-of-way. Most of the right-of-way was vacated in 2004 as part of the development of Walmart to the north and west of the site. The portion remaining has been separated from access to Artemiz Road for many years and is barricaded from Walmart lot to the west. The street no longer serves any public purpose, and neither Home Depot nor Walmart rely on the right-of-way for access to any public streets. The applicant has provided consent emails or letters from all public utilities serving the area. The applicant also made an effort to contact representatives of both Home Depot and Walmart, but was unable to secure any formal consent from either company. However, since neither company needs the right-of-way for access and currently does not utilize the right-of-way, staff does not believe any development will be impacted by this vacation. Since there are not currently any other development applications on file for this site, staff is recommending that if approved by the city council, the vacation be reported and returned to the city prior to the approval of any future planning or building permit applications for the site. And staff does recommend approval of the vacation application with two conditions in the staff report, and I'll be having answering questions you have.
Are there any questions for staff? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Wright. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation?
I'm here, but I don't need to make a presentation.
Okay. Are there any witnesses in favor of the petition? Any witnesses opposed? Then I'll bring it back up here. Is there any general discussion by the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll call for a motion for the public hearing vacation of Adams Dairy Parkway.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Phillips?
I would move for approval of vacation 0718-6451 with staff conditions.
Okay, there are two conditions. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Cradoff?
Okay.
Okay, that will be a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion was approved for the public hearing vacation of Adams Dairy Parkway right-of-way. It will be heard by the city council on August the 6th at 6:00 p.m. All right, then we'll go on to the public hearing for rezoning of Dean's Performance Automotive. I'll open the hearing. Mr. Jury?
Um...
Oh, I'm sorry, exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 7, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. Eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference. And nine, written narrative from Jesse Crooks dated June 29, 2018.
Okay, now Mr. Jury.
Thank you, Madam Chair and planning commissioners. Before you today, the applicant, Dean's Performance Automotive, on behalf of the property owner is requesting to rezone a property about 0.88 acres from its current zoning GB to general business to RC, regional commercial. The property is located at 2700 Northwest-South Outer Road. It is on the south side of Northwest-South Outer and approximately 2,000 feet west of 22nd Street. Currently, it does have two structures, a primary building and an accessory building. The primary building is occupied by an insurance company, and Dean's Performance Automotive currently has a business license for the accessory building. They are looking to -- this request comes before us because they are looking to expand their current automotive repair business into a portion of the primary building, a general commercial building. And they also do want to expand into the -- expand their business into the automotive sales. So this, in order to allow this, it does require a rezoning to RC, and also additionally it will require conditional use permit approval down the road. So I will go into, to better understand this rezoning request, I'll go into the use table a little bit to provide some general idea of what is allowed in regional commercial zoning districts. In the RC, this table up here shows generally office, retail, large-scale retail is allowed as well as outdoor sales, which includes the outdoor sales and service of equipment, which would be the vehicle sales portion of this. Personal services, restaurants, and then also Vehicle Repair Limited is allowed. Vehicle Repair General, which they did mention that they might get into a little bit on their application for this, is not allowed in the RC, but it is allowed as accessory use to vehicle sales, which would go through the conditional use process for either side of things. So I will mention that. And going on, so a couple of things that staff always looks at with rezoning requests are, one, the comprehensive plan, and then also the compatibility of the property and the requested zoning with the surrounding area. So in terms of the comprehensive plan, the 2014 comp plan does show on the future land use policy map, this property as corridor reinvestment, which is primary commercial in nature, and in a paraphrased form is defined as areas along a primary corridor that requires strategic investments to improve both immediate areas as well as the relationship to other potential places elsewhere in the corridor. Development patterns in corridor reinvestment areas require balancing access and visibility along the corridor with incremental investment strategies that can restore value to the corridor as a whole. Some land use categories generally acceptable in this are mixed use, employment-dominated uses, as well as service and entertainment, and some high-density residential as well. The, I will mention that the C3 area is, has not been completed yet, and that this property is in the C3 specific plan area, which is usually adopted as an amendment or addendum to the comprehensive plan, and it dives down a little bit deeper into the specific land uses for each area plan. But we have not completed that yet, but we are hopefully looking at doing that sometime in the near future. Staff does believe that the property is in a location that will best serve community and regional needs as the regional commercial zoning does require. Additionally, other similar properties along Northwest-South Outer Road have been rezoned to the RC zoning district. Lastly, I'll mention how this property does relate to some of the surrounding areas. To the north, it is Northwest-South Outer Road, and as such, it does have access to the regional corridor with I-70. So staff does believe that's inappropriate to the north, it's an appropriate zoning request in this situation. Also, to the east and west, they are zoned general business as well, but other properties in this area along Northwest-South Outer Road have been zoned to RC zoning district. To the south, there are some, there is two-family zoning, TF zoning, and we haven't received any calls on this request, so we haven't had any concerns raised by the residents with this request. But I will say that there is significant topography change and some existing, quite a bit of existing landscaping on the south side of this property. So staff does believe that the natural buffering between this property and the properties to the south will provide some buffering between them. So with that, staff does believe this request is consistent with the rezoning review criteria and does recommend approval. I'll stand for any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Jury? Hearing none. Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to come forward?
Uh, we're here, but we don't need to make a presentation.
Okay. Are there any witnesses here that would like to speak in favor? Any witnesses opposed? All right, hearing none, I'll bring it forward again. Is there any discussion among the commissioners? Make this an easy night. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing for rezoning of Dean's Performance Automotive. And I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Commissioner Haney?
Vote in favor of the public hearing rezoning, RZ07186450, Dean's Performance Automotive.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
Okay. All, this will be also a roll call vote.
Planning Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion is carried, and it will be submitted to the city council for August the 6th at 6:00 p.m. All right? Thank you. Now we'll go on to the public hearing for the planned development concept plan for Blue Springs. I'll open that public hearing. Call the attorney for exhibits.
Madam Chairman, I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit one, staff report with attachments. Two, affidavit of publication in the examiner on July 7, 2018. Three, application with attachments. Four, 185-foot notification map. Five, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Six, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. Seven, Title IV Land Use Section Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And eight, 2014 comprehensive plan by reference.
Okay. Mr. Wright?
All right, thank you Chairman Banks and commissioners. I'm aware this evening is a request for a planned development concept plan for Blue Springs South High School at 1200 Southeast Adams Dairy Parkway. The PD concept plan covers the one-lot, 32.17-acre subdivision, and is currently zoned SF7 single-family residential. The purpose of the concept plan this evening is to allow the construction of new building additions totaling over 77,000 square feet, along with the associated site improvements for those additions. This does include a 7,000-square-foot addition to the Performing Arts Center on the north side of the school, as well as a 77,000 approximately square-foot addition on the southeast corner of the school that would accommodate freshman students. Since the building additions increase the total floor area by over 25 percent, the site is required to be brought into compliance with the current 2015 Unified Development Code. The concept plan is being utilized, requests deviations or exceptions from the UDC that may be difficult to apply to an existing site of this size. The applicant has requested several modifications to the UDC, including allowing a prominent civic building in the SF7 zoning district, since this building type is already developed on the site. Reducing the number of bike parking spaces and requiring that only new parking lot design standards and landscaping requirements apply to the new parking lot south and east of the new freshman addition, and no improvements required elsewhere on site. There are no additional points of access that are being developed from public streets. There are currently three points of access along Adams Dairy Parkway and one along, or two along Ryan Road. No additional are being added to either one of those streets. The only change in access will be a driveway connection between the existing southeast parking lot and the remainder of the campus via this access drive that will be developed to connect the two parking lots, which will provide better access to the freshman addition. An additional 41 parking spaces will be added to the campus. All those parking spaces are predominantly in this area south and east of the new addition. The additional 41 spaces is primarily intended to accommodate the additional staff and visitors for the freshman center as additional students are not of driving age. A parking study has been submitted to confirm that the 842 parking spaces on site is sufficient to meet the needs of the site. The site is required bike parking for 20 percent of students and 3 percent of employees since it is along Adams Dairy Parkway. However, this does add up to 399 bike spaces. The applicant did state that only three students regularly rode bikes to school in the last school year at the, at Blue Springs South, and an additional 10 freshman students biked to the school at the freshman center. So with that, that'd be 13 students. The applicant has provided four different bike racks scattered throughout the campus that can accommodate up to 40 bikes. And staff does believe that that is sufficient to accommodate the number of current bike riders and any future growth in bike riders. The only parking lot area that will be reviewed for compliance with the current UDC is the new parking lot to the south and east of the new freshman center. It does appear that the new parking lot can meet the internal landscaping requirements and buffering requirements around it. It is also requested that the landscaping requirements only apply to the new parking lot area. Landscaping, any deficiencies in landscape buffers along Ryan Road or Adams Dairy Parkway will not be changed. And in 20, or 2005, a variance was approved by the Board of Adjustment that waived all open space requirements for the entire site. For the building design, elevation showing that the additional, the high school currently includes over 262,000 square feet of finished floor area. With the addition, the total school size will be approximately 340,000 square feet. The proposed additions will be designed to match the existing brick on the school. Existing windows and patterns and designs will be carried throughout the design. And then also some of the architectural metal details and canopies will also match and complement the existing school design. Final building elevations will be reviewed with the PD final plan and site plan design review. Proposed signage has also been provided in certain locations, but this is for informational purposes only and not for approval this evening. Any new exterior lighting will also be reviewed through the final plan and site plan design review. And then I'll let the applicant share any information about the construction timeline on that. But staff does recommend approval of the PD concept plan with eight staff conditions in the staff report, and I'll be having answering questions you may have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wright? Yes, Commissioner?
Could you reiterate how much reduction there was at the bike, bicycle park?
Yeah, the site was required, based on the number of students and the number of faculty and staff, 399 bike parking spaces. There's only an estimated 13 students that have used that in the past, and so they're requesting to have 40 spaces. So significantly more than what their current usage is, but also significantly less than what our code requires. Our code does require quite a significant number of bike spaces, specifically for educational purposes, which probably would make sense more in a local neighborhood school that just serves an elementary boundary, but a regional school where a number of students do not live within biking distance of the school is a little high. So, okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Hearing none. Would the applicant like to come forward? And you will need to be sworn in. You would turn and give your name, address.
Mr. Anderson, the testimony about getting this case to be the truth, I've got. Yes? Yes. Okay, Daniel Anderson, 1311 Southeast, East Ridge Circle, Blue Springs, 64014.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt, you did a good job on that. We're excited to do this, this addition with successful passage of the bond here August 7th. One of the things that we'd like to reinforce about this on our gymnasium, that's gonna be a part of this freshman annex, it will be brought into code that you guys will be bringing onboard later, where it will be a storm shelter, and we'll provide that as well onto the north side of the school, so that will service all the population we've had, made sure that we're gonna provide that opportunity for those kids. The construction timeline on that, we're gonna be going out to bid for grading here in a week or so, and after successful passage, then we'll, we'll start the grading, the next bid package mid-August, and then we will start into the next series of getting the slab and the underground plumbing and those things for that. The completion date on this will be August 1st of 2019, allowing the freshman students for Blue Springs South High School to enter in 2019, 20-year. So it's, it's an aggressive timeline, but we have that scheduled out and feel very comfortable with it.
Okay. Are there any questions for the applicant?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Casey?
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Is the, the plan for the freshman center now for Blue Springs High School students to continue going there, or what is the, what is that?
Yeah, what'll currently happen, because we are trying to do a lot with our master facility plan and catch me up on roofs, rooftops. Blue Springs freshmen will stay at the current freshman center, and then when we're ready to re-bond again, '22 is what we're looking at, then we'll go ahead and move and start construction of that. We will be coming forward with some construction at Blue Springs High School because we have a library need that we're having to do there. We also have a huge need, as you guys know, with Golden Regiment and the number of kids they have, so we're gonna be doing a expansion there of the band program as well as a third gym. So then, in '22, we'll address the freshmen moving back on campus there.
Great. Another question I had, if you don't mind. Now, with, with these additions, was, at any point, did, was, did you consider using any kind of solar or renewable energy sources?
Yeah, we have, and we're continuing. We talk with our architects, Hollis and Miller, all the time about what kind of energy savings we can do within the bond. You guys may not be aware of this, but Brittany Hill is a all-electric school. There is no gas to that school, so that is a project with solar that we have been studying for about three years, and I know there's some new incentives out there and opportunities for financing that we're starting to look at that and see, because we were just too late to get in the queue the last time.
Great, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Are there any other questions for the applicant? Gather up. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any witnesses that would like to speak in favor? Anyone that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Are there any other questions? I'll bring it up forward here. Are there any other discussions with the planning commissioners? No? Then I will close the public hearing. And I would entertain a motion on the public hearing, the planned development concept plan for Blue Springs South High School.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Veal?
I would like to make a motion to, a motion to approve concept PDC07186452 for Blue Springs South High.
With the staff's eight conditions?
With the staff's eight conditions.
Okay.
Second.
And I hear Commissioner Casey, second. Thank you very much. That will be a voice roll call?
Planning Commissioner Sanderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Casey?
Aye.
Chairman Banks?
Aye. That motion carried. It will also be heard on August the 6th at the city council at 6:00 p.m. All right? Thank you very much. Now, we have any other business that would like to be brought forward? Do you have any other business?
We do not have any other business, only to let the commissioners know that we do have a meeting scheduled for...
August 13th, right?
August 13th, and we will have a number of cases that evening, so we look forward to seeing you all there, and I do believe that is the evening we have planned for our group photo as well, so.
Okay, so I hope everyone can be there for that. So let, please let us know if you will not be there, I'd like to have everybody there, so. All right, and with that, I would entertain a, is there any other business? How's downtown?
Downtown is great. I would like to, I was just looking up the date here so I can tell you correctly. Remind everyone that coming up in just about one month is the Historical Society's fourth annual Taste of Blue Springs, and those tickets are available at the museum on Sundays and Thursday mornings when the museum is open, and you might also come by and see our new front porch, it's beautiful.
Oh, okay. All right. If there's no other business, I would entertain an adjournment. Motion for an adjournment. Motion for an adjournment.
So moved.
Mr. Haney, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in... Commissioner Sanderson? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much. And please remember to stay.